Again, let me remind you, no smoking on school property. Please be sure that you leave the school property if you decide that you need to go out and have a cigarette. Please turn off all cell phones and any other electronic devices that may just be disruptive to the meeting. Again, I remind you, if you're parked in the fire lane, please go out and move your vehicle because it will be towed if you don't. If you need to leave the auditorium for any reason, please use the door on my left and return back in so that we know that you are checked in and should be here as a registered voter. Do not use the door on my right, except in an emergency. If we all have to leave, leave through the exits, but please come back this door so we can check you back in. Again, I have a photo policy. If anyone is intending to take photos, they must take them from the press section, and no photo may be taken during a vote. Article 2, Section 2.6 of the Town Charters states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent to warrant articles. If any such person is deterred by illness or a other reasonable cause, he shall designate a deputy to attend in his place. I will now call for Department Head roll call. See that we have the Board of Selectmen with us, although missing this evening is Selectman Alan Slavin, who is returning from the southwest and due to the hurricane has had a flight delay. He would have been here if it were not for that. Finance Committee? It's all here. Board of Health? Chief Assessing Officer? Community Development? Conservation? Council on Aging? Data Processing? EMS? Inspection Services? Municipal Maintenance? Planning? Police Department? Shellfish Officer? Town Accountant? Town Clerk? Town Collective Treasurer? Library? Water Pollution Control? And the School Department. Ladies and gentlemen, we were on Article 30 at the end of our last meeting. Is there anyone here tonight that was not here on that Tuesday night when the proponent of the article spoke? We have one, we have a few people. In fairness then, I am going to ask Ms. Miller to please come to the microphone, and I'm going to allow her to have one minute to bring us up to date on Article 30, just so that those who were not here do have an explanation of the article.
Article 30 is for up to $10,000 to bring in a professional arborist to evaluate the plants out at the cemeteries here in town. They are, some of the trees are historic and have very specific needs. The problem is, we don't currently have anyone that can take care of them, as Mark said earlier today, and it is very frustrating, but this particular evaluation is not to cure the problems, but to identify the needs out at the cemeterias in regards to the plants out there. So, we would ask that you support this. As I said, it's only up to $10,000. It is, it is not a great deal of money to bring in a professional and to see what we need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I had already asked for the vote of the both boards, so to speak to the article, Mr. McDonald?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
To the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen?
Through the moderator, you may ask a question. If the Chairman chooses to answer, he has-
Were there any formal discussions between the Cemetery Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen?
To answer-
Before the article came on the line?
To answer the question?
He's not awake.
Through you, back to Mr. McDonald.
No. You need to pull the microphone a little closer.
Amendment, Moderator. Through you, to Mr. McDonald. No.
Thank you. I would like to offer an amendment to this article. I would like to move that Article 30 be indefinite, or move for indefinite postponement.
Do you have that in writing, Mr. McDonald?
I can put it in writing.
If you would. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. To speak to your amendment?
This is a money article. This is a budgetary item, and I do believe there's a level of discussion that needs to occur, a level of supervision, a level of authority that needs to happen before it gets to the town meeting floor. It needs to go through the Board of Selectmen first, and I just think that's the best way to do it. It follows the procedures.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said to the amendment? On my left?
Granted, we did not go before the Selectmen. The article came about because of a conference that I attended for the town, having to do with the care of cemeteries, and this was one of the recommendations. However, because of a lack of a quorum, we only had, I think, three days before the warrant closed in order to come with the article, and as the Selectmen are aware, this will be fully vetted with them before anything is done.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to vote favorable for the amendment because I know it's only $10,000, and I know it probably would help, but these times are really difficult times, and I think we should go through the proper procedures and going through the Board of Selectmen. They should have been made aware of it. And secondly, I just don't see where we have $10,000 to put in the budget.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on the amendment for indefinite postponement. This does require a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by majority. The amendment now becomes the main motion. Again, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Article 18 is a solar lease at the wastewater treatment plant. May I have a motion, please?
Article 18. I move that the town vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the wastewater treatment plant located at 6 Tony's Lane, as shown on the Town of Wareham Assessors Map 43, Parcel 1,000, from the Board of Selectmen and/or Sewer Commission, and now held for sewer general and municipal purposes to the Board of Selectmen and/or Sewer Commission, for sewer general municipal and for disposition purposes, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and/or Sewer Commission to lease of said property for a term of up to 20 years on terms that determines to be in the best interests of the town. All such procurements to be pursuant to the GL 25A Paragraph 11L or any other procurement methodology determined to be lawful in the best interests of the town.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article? Mr. Campina?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Guy Campina, Water Pollution Control. I believe I'm Precinct 3. What I'm asking tonight is permission from the body to enter into a lease agreement, or at least investigate a lease agreement, for a solar field. I have a brief PowerPoint, and I'd like to go through it. First thing I want to ask ourselves is developing a solar farm in Wareham. How are we going to go green, and what's the bottom line? Next slide, Matt, please. Over the past year or two, we've done a lot of research. We've talked to other communities. We've talked to the state, Department of Energy, and we've looked into different ideas about developing a solar farm here at Wareham. One of the things that we really want to be careful of is to find a qualified developer and recommended by the IG to use 25A 11I as a procurement tool to help us get to where we need to go. Next slide, please. So, the question we ask ourselves is building a solar farm site in Wareham, more beneficial, or should I continue to buy power, or does the treatment plant continue to buy power through NSTAR? Now, our provider is NSTAR, so that's the question. And why would we consider a solar panel? Three of the reasons that are cited here is economic impact, environmental impact, educational impact, and we'll get into each one, but in fact, we spend annually $400,000 a year to buy power for the treatment plant. We use, as you will see, 14 cents kilowatt hour. That was based on 2009, 2010, and it's been pretty consistent. We use approximately 2,700,000 kilowatt hours a year of electricity consumed. Next slide, please. We're looking, one of the scenarios is a System A, 1.6 megawatts, and we're estimated to generate 2,000-plus megawatts in the first year, but a potential of offsetting 80% of the cost at the plant. That's just for the plant. It's not for the pump stations. That's where the 2.7 comes in, but the plant itself, we use 1.9 annually, so this is a good offset for the plant. Next slide, please. We also have a scenario of 2 megawatts in the first year, generation of 2,500. That has a potential of offset 100% of the power at the plant. Next slide, please. Economic benefits, I just briefly put it down here. You can read it better than I can read it to you. The benefits, no capital outlay, and that's due to the procurement procedure we're looking at, 25I, 25A, I'm sorry, 11I. We're looking for reduced rate of electricity. We're going to purchase this electricity from the person or company chosen, after vetted by the Selectmen, and the state recommends a consultant, and of course, the state's involved in this whole process. So, our goal is to buy, we have to buy electricity no matter what because we consume quite a bit. So, yes, I can. I've got five minutes, but I'll slow it right down for you. Not a problem. So, the goal is to purchase electricity at a reduced rate. We're looking at 10 cents, and I'll get into that in a second, opposed to the 14, or we can negotiate better terms. Also, there's permitting fees that has an economic benefit to the town, and that's through billing permits, electrical permits, or whatever else the town can generate in fees. Then, the biggest thing is the lease of the property, up to 20 years. We lease the property, so that's a revenue stream to the chosen developer, so we lease it to them, plus we get the benefit of electricity, so it's two benefits economically to the Town of Wareham. And also, tax revenues. There's business revenues, business taxes. It's another area to get money for the town. And of course, while this is being built, there's money coming to town during that period from the workers or what have you. And plus, once it's up, it's running, they maintain it, they operate it, so those people in town spending their money also in the Town of Wareham. So, that's another benefit. So, it's important that we develop it here for many reasons, and they're all economical. Next slide, please. And this is the dollar and cents. You can see to the left, to y'all left and my left, what we're presently doing, 29, 2010, you can see what we spent. We use approximately 244,000 kilowatt hours-
You have about 20 seconds?
Well, okay. Of kilowatt hours, and so you can see the savings. The one next to the right explains the savings of 10 cents. Next slide, please. You can see the January, it sums it up, first year is $115,000 in savings, averages $10,000 a month in savings. Next slide, please. The economical impact, environmental impact, they're there, you've heard them. I don't have to beat them up. You know them all, emissions, whatnot. You probably know them as well as I, if not better, so no sense of beating that, but that's there for you.
Mr. Campina, time?
Time.
Would you like to ask for an additional-
Could I ask, Madam Moderator, for a couple of minutes, minute, whatever it takes to wrap this up?
Would you like to ask for two minutes?
Please.
Three minutes?
Please.
This requires the vote of the body. All in favor of giving Mr. Campina an additional three minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You have an additional three minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. So, the environmental impact, you can see as well as I, and these are numbers put out by the Environmental Protection, the DEP, of the environmental impact that this solar field will do for us, the benefits. Next slide, please. Educational opportunities. Building the solar farm in Wareham allows us to bring our students in from Upper Cape, Wareham High School, science, watch this whole process develop from the ground to the completion of it. They also have a program where they can tie in through a data acquisition system that the students at Upper Cape, we have a lot of electrical students there, can watch this electrically producing, daily, hourly, what have you, so it's an educational opportunity. It's a growing sector in Massachusetts. We now employ 72,000 workers, and these numbers are from the Department of Energy, and it's a growth of 11% clean energy in Massachusetts, so it's exciting to be part of that. And so, what I'm asking is to help us maximize the educational opportunities for our young kids, students in the Town of Wareham. I wanted to say, we had a student from Upper Cape at the plant this summer, and it was quite an experience. He took back a lot. He was able to pass his grade-three operator's license, which gives him the ability to come into the workforce after high school at $29,000 a year. Pretty exciting to be part of that. We're excited for him. He's an honest student from the Town of Wareham, so just another opportunity. So, we're pretty excited about that, and we'd like to continue that trend. So, I want to summarize this for you. We want to develop the site here in Wareham, the solar field. And I do want to point out that the land we're using is land that was previously either a sludge drying bed, or it was a landfill. So, we have it lined, we're collecting water, we're running pumps, so we're spending money to maintain this land anyways, and it has no benefit to us. So, by setting a solar panel, a solar field, which is actually inner valley, if you will, it would have no impact, as I can see, and we'll definitely vet that to the neighbors because it will be shallow down in the ground. All this land now becomes beneficial and useful to us, so we can make some money off land that we're paying to maintain with no return, and now we have the opportunity to get some return to help us offset electrical costs. I know that we're all really enjoying good benefits right now from electricity because of the gas. How long that's going to last, you and I can guess, we really don't know, but this puts us in a position to not depend and to have some set factors and some guaranteed electrical rates that we can live by, and we can ride on anything that may or may not happen, but we're prepared. So, I ask you to support this. I thank you very much for your time, and if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to try my very best to answer them.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted three in favor, one opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted six up and two abstained.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 18? On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Brenda Ekstrom. I am in favor of this project. I have two questions, though. Number one, is there anywhere in this article that says that this will be offset by the water pollution control facility? Just because the Selectmen could enter into a contract and the water pollution control facility, which is an enterprise fund, you know, conceivably could not see the benefits of that, and I think that the sewer users should have that, and so I'd like to know that. And secondly, if, Matt, could you go on the slide where he was showing the benefits? There were six benefits, I believe. Yep, back one. Nope. One more. Right there. Thank you. In economic benefit number five, tax revenue, only a project is cited in Wareham. Payment in lieu of taxes are real property tax money. I'm wondering if the people that come in, my understanding is that if it's a municipality, we wouldn't pay taxes. I know that the sewer users were charged about, I don't know, $300,000, $400,000 a year of payment in lieu of taxes in the past. Is that something that you're looking to go back into, is to charge the water pollution control facility with a payment in lieu of taxes again? If you can answer those?
To answer those two questions?
What I'm saying in number five, and we could check with the assessors better than I, probably a better question, what I'm thinking is that a business tax, that the business that got the proposal, they won the proposal, then we tax that business as an operating viable business in the Town of Wareham, and that tax benefit goes directly to the town as a tax, as any other business in the Town of Wareham. So, that's why I don't want the sewer payers. It's for the business itself.
Mr. Campina, if you could-
I'm sorry. It's for the business itself. It's not for the rate users. I have no intentions, or at least my intentions, and we'll definitely negotiate this, but we have no intentions whatsoever of putting any burden whatsoever on the back of the rate payers or any tax benefit in the Town of Wareham. This is to be funded totally by the proposed developer, no money from the town, no money out of our coffers, no money out of the sewer users, nothing at all. So, the intent of five is property taxes from the business to the town. And the other question I counted answer, it was a very good question about offset. The goal is to offset the cost of electricity at the treatment plant. It's $400,000 a year, and that's what we're looking to offset. That'll be a benefit to the rate users in the wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you. Mrs. Ekstrom, to the microphone, if you have anything further?
I'm sorry, I was just conferring with Mr. Campina to see if, how, if I amended to say for the water pollution control facility, how he would like it done. That was all so.
Thank you.
I have no problem with that. I mean, it is to be a benefit to the pollution control and the benefit to the rate payers, and if she offered amendment, I certainly wouldn't object to it.
Point of order. Are you all set, Mrs. Ekstrom?
I am. If you could go on, I'm just going to, that's why I stepped back, so I could see where I should put it in if I'm going to amend it.
On my left?
Jeff Swett, Cremisid Road, Precinct 1. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Campina. From where does the rate per kilowatt hour of 10 cents come, and for how long would this rate be guaranteed or required?
That's all part of the negotiations. Part of the 25A process would be to pick three of the top contenders, and we can wrestle over those numbers and pick the very best that we want. If the town's not happy with any of them, we'll excuse them. The 10 cents came from interviewing different companies out there. It was Siemens, Khan Ed, I believe it was, Constellation, and they gave us the scenarios. They said that it would be 10 cents or less to be totally negotiable, so I used the higher number of 10 cents in my example.
Excuse me. Madam Moderator, and the length of the contract, do you anticipate?
I anticipate 20 years for a reasonable payback for the developer because they have to have a benefit, but it could be less. Again, when we sit down and negotiate, those are the type of things that we'll ask and wrestle over with the proposed top three picks to present something to the town that's beneficial to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
Madam Moderator, I just wanted to correct. The Finance Committee's vote was 7-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Mrs. Ekstrom, I believe you have about 13 seconds?
Thank you. I just want to make an amendment to it. I would just like to amend it where it says, change the purpose to hold said sewer for general municipal purposes into disposal by lease to alternate entity companies. I'm sorry, it's different up here. Pursuant, another procurement determined to be lawful in the best interest of the town for the benefit of the water pollution control facility.
So, all you're adding is, at the very end of the motion, as presented, after the words, "in the best interest of the town for the benefit of the water pollution control facility."
Yes.
That's your amendment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second to speak to your amendment?
I believe in my question I did, but as many of you know who are sewer users, we have an EDU rate that is based on the expenses of the water pollution control facility. I just want to ensure that any of the benefits that we receive goes to the people who pay and have paid for the operation of that plant.
Are you all set, Mrs. Ekstrom?
Yes, I'm just writing it down.
Okay. Is there anything further to be said to the amendment that was just made on the floor by adding to the motion that's before you, at the very end, "for the benefit of the Wareham Pollution Control Facility"? Seeing no one else to speak to the amendment, the vote will now come on the amendment, and it will be as you see before you and at the very end, and in the best interest of the town for the benefit of the water pollution control facility. It's for the water pollution control facility. That's the name of the facility. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment passes. The amendment now becomes part of the main article, and the main article is now before us. Is there anything further to be said on Article 18 with the amendment included? Seeing no one standing, this does require a two-thirds vote because it requires a lease of the land. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor of Article 18 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind Article 49 from the spring 2010 town meeting, which appropriated the sum of $255,000 from the Community Preservation Fund FY 2011 Estimated Annual Revenues under the category of open space for the acquisition of the northern portion of the parcel of land now or formerly owned by BKT Realty Trust, 2C Enterprises Inc., Assessors Map 117, Lot 1005A.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. To speak to the article, on my left?
Angela Dunham, CPC Chair. This is a housekeeping article. We are rescinding it simply because we were not able to negotiate a purchase and sales agreement on this property, so therefore, the article is no longer valid.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted five in favor, zero opposition, zero abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? Seeing no one, I now will call for a vote on Article 21. Article 21 requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 5 is for additional state aid, education aid, Chapter 70 funds. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to increase the net school spending line item under Article 6 of the 2012 annuals, I mean, spring annual town meeting by $120,053.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. To speak to the article, on my right?
Jeff Swett, Cremisid Road, Precinct 1. There were two major additions to the cherry sheets. They were both approximately the same size. One increased the general, what used to be called lottery or general state aid to the town, and the other increased the aid to schools, Chapter 70. That's what this is. It was not appropriated during our town meeting in April, and we ask your support for it at this time.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, zero opposition, and zero abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven in favor, zero against, and zero abstention.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 5? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for a vote on Article 5- Seeing no one standing, I now will call for a vote on Article 5. Article 5 is to increase the net school spending line item under Article 6 of the 2012 spring annual town meeting by $120,053. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. We're down to the last article, Article 15. Article 15 is for fiscal year 2012 unpaid bills. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, or by any combination of the foregoing, a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior bills of prior fiscal year, or to take any action relative thereto. The action that we're looking to do is transfer from the Water Pollution Control retained earnings, the amount of $12,685.57, to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2012 as set forth here. And to trans-
Could I interrupt you one minute before? We need to make a correction to your motion before we have a motion and have it seconded. Based on legal opinion by legal counsel. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. May I make the motion differently?
Yes, please.
As opposed to amending it?
Please do.
Because really what should be stated is, I move that the town vote to transfer from FY 2012 certified free cash available funds as set forth on the slide before you. Is that the entire motion? All right, second. To transfer from available, from FY 2012 certified free cash. And then you can keep going, you can take out, or by any combination before going. Ladies and gentlemen?
Okay, I think we have it correct now.
Thank you.
Hey, do I have a second? To speak to the article? Point of order, Madam Moderator? State your point. If the, if, this says to transfer from free cash, what about the act, the first action of the article? Does that still apply? I'm going to defer to Mr. Sullivan, because this is an article that has to meet DOR approval.
Thank you, Select. Thank you, Selectmen Bagley. We're going to have to do a combination on that. I apologize for this. What it should be is 2012 Water Pollution Control Facility retained earnings, and from FY 12, free cash. So, the transfers from the Water Pollution Control Facility will be from the retained earnings, and the transfer from the FY 12, and the other part be transferred from FY 12, 2012 certified free cash. If you see on there, under the action, you'll see it says transfer from Water Pollution Control retained earnings, and then transfer from FY 2012 certified free cash.
Okay, so if Mrs. Donahue would withdraw her motion and the second, and then, I think we have it correctly now?
I will withdraw my motion.
This, and?
I withdraw my second.
And we, okay. You would restate the motion as it appears before us?
I move that the town vote to transfer from FY 2012 Water Pollution Control Facility retained earnings and FY 2012 certified free cash, a sum of money to pay unpaid bills of prior, of prior bills of prior fiscal year, or to take any action relative thereto.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, may I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action, six in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on, oh, to speak to the article, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will keep this brief, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. When we do not, when we end up not paying the bills in that current fiscal year, so fiscal 2012, we can't simply write a check for it, we need an act of town meeting to pay those. So, if it went past July 15th, actually, we no longer can pay that bill without an act of town meeting. So, we're just requesting to pay, pay these last fiscal year bills. Thank you.
On my left?
Just a point of information, I would like to know who the Jericho Mountain Wind Hunters are, and what they did for $6,000?
To answer the question?
I gave my notes over to them, but I'm going to go off my memory. Jericho Mountain Wind Hunters were, they did the wind study when we were looking for a wind turbine at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Thank you. Mrs. Kachuli?
Well, Madam Moderator, I'd like to ask a question and verification, because this is not what was presented to me originally for my vote. The Jericho Mountain Wind Hunters has been answered, but I was to understand that the Woodward, or Woodward and Caron Bill was asked for by the Board of Selectmen for a different subject, not directly in conjunction with the sewer users? So, I'm kind of confused over that, could I get clarification?
To answer the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It was for a sewer capacity study.
Could I have a broader explanation on that? A sewer capacity for what in particular? Is this directly in relation to sewer users already in use, or some other project coming on down the line?
To answer the question?
I'm going to ask Mr. Campina to answer that, thank you.
The sewer capacity study, we hired Woodward and Caron to look at the capacity study presented to us by CDM. It was requested by the Board of Selectmen through Mr. Andrews. So, Woodward and Caron was hired, they came in, they studied all the data, came to the plant, did their work, I'm sorry, did their work at the plant, and determined what we had for capacity, and what our future availability of capacity was. And you hear that number, 156,000, you hear 300,000 by loading, those numbers were generated from Woodward and Caron, an engineering firm, originally hired also when we had no director of the sewer control facility to advise. And this all came under the direction of the DEP, through the town administrator. So, when we got the bill, it was originally $10,000. $3,000 was paid, there was a confusion, and $6,000 just didn't get paid. So, they provided the service, we neglected to pay them, I take responsibility for that, and so they need to be paid, and that's the purpose of the $6,687.37. Jericho Mountain was in fact for the actual tower that was put up. They didn't provide the wind study, that was engineering. Engineering was still trying to get the pay-
Just to answer Mrs. Kachuli's question, please, Mr. Campina?
I'm sorry, that, I hope that answered your question, if not, I follow up, we can go from there. Thank you.
I'm just really confused over this. So, every time the Board of Selectmen decide that they need to find out what capacity we have, we hire a bunch of lawyers and check the capacity, or whatever, and then we just dump the bill on the sewer users? I'm just very disturbed by this. I think that we're, we're running across a gray area here and crossing the line back and forth, that's all.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Cliff Sylvia, Precinct One, I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. We have a motion before us to move the question. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We now will take a vote on Article 15, as it appears before you on the screen, for unpaid bills. This does require a nine-tenths vote, so I will try for unanimous.
Point of order?
State your point.
The question was moved, there was only two speakers prior to that. Is that, I mean, it wasn't going on for a long time?
I accepted his motion, Mr. Camarano, I'm sorry.
Fraudulent.
The vote now comes before us. Again, this requires a nine-tenths vote. I will try for unanimous. This is to pay unpaid bills. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It does pass by a nine-tenths vote. Ladies and gentlemen, we have concluded all of the warrant articles. I will now ask for a motion to dissolve town meeting. So moved, do I have a second? Ladies and gentlemen, town meeting now, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very, very much for coming out tonight.